February 26, 2024, meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:04 PM. With a reminder to all those who are watching and participating, to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a remote meeting. The publishing attend electronically via WebEx with the link provided. Meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district's website. I'll now call the roll. Mr. Stephen Lawrence?
Present.
Ms. Sarah Beth Gilfreen?
Present.
Dr. Jay Daya?
Present.
Present.
Present remotely, Marsha. Ms. Lauren Fanchese?
Present.
Ms. Brooke Hopkins?
Present remotely.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Hughes? Dr. Michael Strampler?
Present remotely.
Thank you. Ms. Erin Williamson?
Present in person.
Thank you. And I'm the Chair of the Department of Education. Staff in attendance this evening, including Ms. Mom Batenza, Ms. Donna Kuhn, Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Carrie Orcharding, Director of Special Services remotely, Ms. Donna Ms. Sherman, Principal in person, Ms. Cheryl Toffel, Assistant Principal in person, and Ms. Marsha Dejanero, Strategic Board remotely. Thank you all. Anthony, are we ready for the pledge? Okay, we'll wait one second. Evening, I'm really happy to announce that we have a video of students from Marcelino's Grade 4 class. Prominently in the video, they'll be presenting the pledge of allegiance, joining us this evening. And we will see Charlotte Wolf, Sam Bammett, and Daniel Chat. So as soon as Mr. Billings gets that up, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Are we proceeding to show it next month? Okay, we will do that. I'm happy to highlight our students. We'll do that next month. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We have a flag over here. Pledge of Allegiance. And to the Republic, which stands "One Nation, Under God, and Justice For All." Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing the students from.
Do you have?
We would love to see them. We'd love to see them at Marcelino's Grade 4 class.
Thank you.
Because that's what we're all about here, the kids, so. Why highlight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I knew that Mom and I talked about doing to highlight our students, which we're so happy to do. And so those people who helped to put this together, thank you very much. And we kind of brought this on, Anthony, with our dress rehearsal. So thank you for your patience. Correspondents? Sarah Beth?
Sarah Beth? Yeah, there is some correspondence in the board book. It's all on the topic that was talking about this meeting, so you can find it in the board book.
So I'm going to remind board members that when you're speaking to find the DIP and speak to the DIP. We're working on improving that as well. Public comment. Are there people who signed up for public comment?
I would like to speak if that's possible. Yes? Sorry, this is my first time. Okay, my name's Laura Hall. I'm here to speak. I'll just put my video on.
Laura, could you just hold on a minute because I have to read the statement about public comment.
Okay.
The Board welcomes public participation and is appreciative of the feedback we receive from the community, whether it is through letters or public comment at meetings. If you are making a public comment at tonight's meeting, please be aware that the Board will not respond to any comments made during the public comment period, except to clarify issues. We will take into consideration your comments, and when appropriate, district administration will follow up with you at a later point in time. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. As in the past, Mr. Hughes, he'll serve as our timekeeper this evening, so I will ask that when the allotted two minutes is indicated, that speakers respectfully conclude their speech. Thank you. Okay, Laura?
Okay, thank you. I'm here to speak in support of the Advanced Math Program. I'm a parent of a 3rd and 5th grade student with differing math abilities, though I think both suffer as a result of not having differentiated math programs. I don't take lightly that this would be a different program than we currently do, and I don't want to say that it would be difficult, but that it would sway from current standards to do this. But I, along with hundreds of other parents who signed the petition, think that it's necessary adjustment to our teacher curriculum. I'm a product of a standard public education where I started in 3rd grade almost 30 years ago, having four separate math classrooms. And I know that this is a feasible, simple, and equitable solution to help serve all of the students best for their current math needs as well as their future math needs in the future. And I know that this is a topic that's been discussed readily. I'm just here to stand behind the hundreds of other parents who maybe signed something but aren't able to come to these meetings.
Thank you. And then in person, Catherine Mizza-Caple? Okay, I'm wondering if you could step up to the podium and because there's a disc there for that. Thank you.
So I had written this down, so you may have already read what I submitted via email, but I thought I would come in person as well on behalf of myself and my husband Ben, who's with our kids. So what I wrote is, Dear Members of the Woodbridge Board of Education, I am writing as a member of the community whose family has benefited from the ACE's Open Choice Program. Our family lives in New Haven, and we were thrilled when our son Remy was offered a place in kindergarten in the Woodbridge Public Schools, which he started in 2022. So he's now a mag first year. We were thrilled not just for him, but because we have a second child. She'll be three in April. And the ACE's Open Choice Program applies a sibling preference to determine where applicants are placed. Now that Remy's in 1st grade, he has established friendships in the Woodbridge community, and we as a family have developed trusting and meaningful relationships with his teachers and other members of the Beecher Road School. We don't presume to understand the full history or concerns underlying the decision for Woodbridge Public Schools to no longer participate in ACE's Open Choice, but what we can speak to is our personal experience as a family that has benefited from it and that would be impacted by its closure because of our two children, one in the school system and one not. Like all families, we made the best choices we could for our family at any major crossroads in our lives along the way. And so we're here trying to do that now. So in addition to the excellent social and learning environment here, the sibling preference policy that ACE's Open Choice uses was one of the major reasons that we chose it ultimately for our first child. And sort of not being able to rely on that sibling preference would mean that our daughter Lila, when she starts kindergarten in 2026, would either need to go to a different school district or we would have to move our son in order for them to be within the same school system. I'm sure that you can imagine how challenging that would be for a family to have children in either two different school districts, but it would be a major change and burden for our son to move him in the 4th grade. So we would, as a family, like to ask the Board of Education to consider providing an exception to families with children already enrolled in the Woodbridge Public Schools through ACE's Open Choice to allow siblings to attend school within the district. And thank you for considering our request.
Thank you, Catherine. I believe as part of the superintendent's report, there may have been clarifications. You want to stick around for that? Any other public comments? Marsha, I see your hand up, but I don't think you have public comments. And I don't see any other hands raised. Oh, okay. I will let you do that in a moment.
Okay. Hi, I'm Betty Miller. I have three kids here, 1st grade, 4th grade, and 6th grade. And I just want to say, they're not so happy about the math, but I would say since that meeting, I've seen a change in my 6th graders' class. She's been allowed to just move ahead in the unit, and she's no longer bored. So I'm happy enough, I would say, you know, we're not there yet, but I really appreciate the start. And one thing I just want to say is I wish she would have given this chance many years ago, right? Like had she started this 1st grade, 4th grade, she would have had so many more years of learning math every day. So I just want to say thank you. I felt like you guys stayed here, kind of what we were hoping for. And I think if we start, we'll get there. That's not yet, but I was just, thank you. You guys had a lot of fires you had to cut out. And so we did take math into consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I added your name to the log. Thank you, Jen. I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the PTO update. There is a written report from the PTO that can be found online in Board Book. Are you learning to speak tonight? Oh, wonderful. I encourage the public to access the report, and maybe you could tell us who you are and add anything that you would like to highlight. Do we have that? I didn't provide it. You didn't understand it. I thought that since I didn't, Cindy just said she might want to be in line. So if you could talk with. But it is powerful. It is powerful.
Yeah, so Monica, I'm Vice President of the PTO. This is me. I would just like to say we weren't able to make it today, but I'm glad that I'm glad that the stimulus of the online. Our latest two fun activities that have been more of a community involvement, student enrichment type after-school things. Okay, we just had our STEM or STEM night, which is science focused. It involves both implementation and a lot of hands-on work as well. We had over, we were over 300 participants. No very common, we wondered. And another part of the work that we're trying to foster here, in terms of getting this going, we also brought forth a wise and new parent volunteer pitch. You know, that's a big part of our mission is not only to enrich what children are offered on top of, you know, beautiful opportunities off at every school, but also to bring parents and families together as they come to events, but also with volunteers for them. In terms of what we have coming up, we have the Math Night on Tuesday. So that's just around the corner. And then from there, and that's a lot of interactive things, math for all grades, all ages to be, are welcome. And then we have International Night, which is a non-regular International Night. It's the first International Night that we will have. We'll have food, representing local charities, all the activities, and a lot of human involvement is at as well for the district's performance. And that's something that we're trying to highlight. We're also really proud that at D night and at some of our future events coming up, we've been able to get a few more teachers to be involved, both in volunteering and coming to the event. They're just one of our volunteers there, which is trying to get more to the involvement. I know they already have busy, long days, and it would be a great time for you to come and be little celebrity better for all students. But that's nearly it. We're really grateful for all the youth volunteers who have joined us this year that even others who should have been born a lot of new parents to come over here to move to happen. We've had a lot of new faces show up and become involved.
Same question. Would you tell us what International Night is so that everyone who's watching will be aware?
It is on March, what is it, the 15th? That's the middle 10th, I think. What is that, the 15th? One, like Sharon's.
It's the 14th. March 14th. Perfect. All right. Thanks to everyone out in TV land who will know when International Night is and know that they can purchase their tickets online, correct? Perfect. Monica, thanks so much. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Board members submitted from the December 11th Special Meeting, the DDP, 3rd Special Meeting, and the January 16th Regular Meeting are included in the consent agenda, along with the Budget Narrative, a Budget Summary, detailed financial report, and the combined financials. You'll also find how to be five, one, this one, this one, which is on for Thursday review. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda for discussion? Don't see anyone, so may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Stephen Lawrence? Do I have a second to that motion? Sarah Beth? Motion to accept the consent agenda. Since we have remote members, I'm going to, you know what? I think it's going to be unanimous vote. So I think unanimous, we can raise our hands. Person in favor? I see Brooke's hand raised, Jay's hand raised, and Mike's. Thank you very much, board members. That's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Batenza?
Thank you. I'm going to keep the initial part of my report brief because we have several items on the agenda, and we'll be jumping around a little bit. So our current level, I need to touch on that. It's currently 877 students. I do want to just remind folks that in the fall, the Board made an effort to revisit the open choice decision, and in fact, back in the fall, reopened the spots. So happy to say that siblings do have first priority. We were aware that there were two kindergarten siblings coming in. I had communicated with Lynn Bailey, who runs the, you know, ACE's part of the choice, and she had assured us that there were two coming in, and we opened up three spots to from last year, and we had one available this year. So Board is committed and pleased to do that. So also, as you may be aware, the Board of Education's approved budget was submitted to the Board of Selectment on January 25th, and recently it moved to the Board of Finance as proposed with a 3.9, 3.89% increase. It wasn't touched, which was, you know, lovely for that support, and we continue to wait. The town has a challenge. They have a challenging budget process ahead of them, and we understand that, and we appreciate the support that we are given. So again, just a few things that I have sent out that I wanted to touch upon. We continue to progress with our summer roof and ground project. So tonight, one of the motions the Board will be asked to make is a motion that is required as part of our state application project for the roof portion of the work. Once this approval is received, Donna Kuhn and I will meet next week for a required planning meeting with the state, and that's the final step before we are able to secure vendors for our project. So, you know, we want to get going on that. Summer jobs are scheduled early, and we will be competing with other districts for vendors. So commensurately, we do need to relocate our summer programs. I had said something out to the community, I think maybe a week or two now ago, that the BRS summer programs, which are extended school year and summer original, will be moving to Amity Middle School Bethany. Jen Byer, Superintendent, was very happy to try to work with us. She's also worked with Rec. Everybody Rec is moving to Amity High School. And we are being housed at Amity Middle School Bethany. So same rate program, different location, and we anticipate a great summer as usual. So we appreciate family support. We really do have a great working relationship with our whole of districts, as I think you'll see later. So those are the general updates I have.
Perfect. Any questions from board members about those general updates? I don't see any, so we can move on to the math.
Okay, Mr. Billings, if you could pull up the presentation from the BRS. So tonight, it's kind of a special night. We are excited to be here and share with you our work. So, you know, it came to my attention in October that there were concerns about math. We took them very seriously, and we started to talk about them. I do want you to know, though, a few things. One is that when I was hired over a year ago, I believe I should have been referenced this book, What Do I Do With A Problem? And the root of this book is that a problem can become an opportunity, and I do believe that. So we looked at this as an opportunity to look at our practice, look at other people's practice, look at our vision and our mission and our beliefs, look at our children's data, and see what it is we're doing well, what is working based on data, and where can we make improvements? Because the other thing that I have been clear about since I was hired is that we are always looking for room to improve. We are never done. So, you know, I would like to thank, we have a special guest, Frank Procaro, Superintendent for Amity, which is Region 5, where our children head to. And you will hear from Frank shortly, because what we're going to do is I'm going to kind of recap some of the work that we've done since these concerns were brought to us. And then we are going to move into what's happened right now at Beecher Road School, and then we are going to move into hearing from Frank regarding what does that look like when our learners in Woodbridge make it through the Amity School System? Where do they end up? And how do they look compared to the rest of the group, but most importantly, to themselves? So I do think, Frank, I also want to thank the administrative team. You know, we've spent a lot of hours doing this work, and that includes Donna, actually, because when we work as a team, the business manager's input isn't just financial. We are all, you know, parents. We all have viewpoints on education, and her insight has been invaluable. And the most important people to thank would be the teachers, because our learners are a product of the opportunities that our teachers put before them and the opportunities that the teachers identify for learning come from their relationships with each student. That is the root of what works here at Beecher Road School. So a great deal of our presentation highlights the learning success we've identified, and we've also identified areas in which we can grow, and you will hear those maybe a little bit closer to the net. So since October, but actually, this is something that we do all the time. We've looked at a few things, just as part of our practice. We do think about math. We have been thinking about math. But to be very specific, and kind of streamlined, we started an ambitious research effort. We researched everything. We talked with Amity, and that means middle school and high school. We talked with experts in the field. We met with Catherine Gavin, who was an expert in the field of the Yank School of Education, gifted and talented, Renzo's Center, a highly respected math educator and expert. We reviewed the parent concerns. We talked with our math specialists. We talked with our teachers about student performance. We talked with other districts in our dirt and not in our dirt. What opportunities do they offer learners in the, maybe the 5th and 6th grade or their top-level grade? How do they meet their sharp-thinking students meet? Because the districts in our dirt are all pretty sharp thinkers. We read so many articles from reputable sources. We studied our own achievement and growth data. We reviewed our mission and visions, which we do often, and we, you know, even our Board knows. We review how that feeds into, which is by Amity's mission and vision, because it all pushes the same learning forward. We reviewed our schedule. We use the POMO4 standards, because that's a parameter under which we work. The math practice standard, the NGSS standards. We reviewed our current resources that we have for Tier 1 instruction, as well as compacting and differentiating and extension. We actually looked at the tasks put before our learner. That's very important to us, because you can put anything in front of a child. What they do with it really evidences the learning. So we studied student work, and we reviewed our beliefs about math and math instruction. So some of the research that we touched upon, I just wanted to, you know, highlight. We will post both of these presentations with Frank's permission for the Amity part, but we will post these on our website so that they can be reviewed. But some of the research that we have seen, there's no one answer. There is no one answer. There are districts who do offer, you know, maybe advanced math in 3rd. We offer pre-algebra in 6th grade to students who make that 5th or 6th cut. But overall, the research points to the fact that K-8 mathematics concepts are very important, and children need the time to learn that firm test properly. And it talks about the fact that acceleration approaches that involve skipping standards do put future learning at risk. When there was a survey conducted by the ACT, elementary parents may not be quite familiar with that assessment yet, but it's a standardized assessment taken in this high school often. We probably found that topics from grades 6 to 9 were more important for college faculty to college preparation than advanced topics. Also from the NCCM, so the first one from elementary mathematics. Their quote here talks about the fact that "we have to create opportunities for students to show their strengths, and all students need access to rich content and open-ended problem solving." These are all part of our belief. These current research pieces are part of our belief. So if you could continue. One of the beliefs that is a thread through the Board of Education's mission and vision and Beecher Road School's mission and vision and our teachers' approach is that intelligence is not fixed. It can be developed. We believe that, and it's seen in our work. It's seen in the tasks that are put before the students. It's seen in the conversations that the teachers have with their children. And so I just, I challenge you to think about, there is a consequence. If you believe that, there are some very natural consequences, and the converse is always true. If you think that they can't develop forever, there's a consequence to that. Okay. So. Could you put it again, please? Okay, we've learned quite a bit, and I'm just going to rattle some things that are going to be repeated again through some of the evidence that Lisa has. So our goal is to ensure that all students have access to high-quality instruction that meets diverse needs, and it develops deep understanding of critical math thinking. So our work has affirmed a few things. It affirmed our belief. Our research affirmed that what we're believing is really the right thing. Our research affirmed that teacher-student Our research affirmed that teacher-student relationships are the key to any learning. Our teachers know our kids. If our kids do not feel loved and safe and secure, they're not going to be able to learn. That's Madlo from Mean Choma eighty-one. Thank you for something. Our belief that ability grouping in elementary school in most cases does not align with our philosophy of educating the whole child, nor is it appropriate for most learners. Research shares that children in grades four through six are still developing abstract reasoning, which is critical thinking necessary for advanced math concepts. Research also supports learning in a zone of proximal development. And pushing learners beyond that dome prematurely can lead to frustration, shutdown, and disengagement and learning gaps. So we have learned that few districts offer any type of advanced math in their highest elementary grade, including pre-algebra. Many elementary schools do not offer that. It is often offered in a sixth-grade configuration where sixth is part of a middle school, where your staff are certified six through twelve mathematics instruction. Our teachers are certified pretty much to this. I'm the sign for at K-8, pre-K. They don't do that anymore. So few districts really do offer that. And even if a few offer some sort of an option, even fewer group students by their ability. Some of the towns that we researched and talked to on the phone or in person were Bethany and Orange, obviously. Cheshire, Fairfield, Trumbull, South Windsor, Westport, we hit a variety. We also learned that early separation of students into advanced programs or tracks can create an equity issue. It can exacerbate achievement gaps for underrepresented populations, which is a concern of ours. We also learned, and we knew, that there are a select few very unique mathematically-minded and math-passionate learners who would benefit from separate curriculum opportunities. Every piece of research that we looked at, Kathy Gavin, that we talked to from the NEAG School of Education, gifted and talented, they all gave us that same it's one to two percent of your population. It's a very small population. But they're there and we have to find them in our district. But there's, we also learned there are a lot of other learners who aren't at that one or two percent level but are still ready for more. So we look at those as identified through multiple assessment points as well as stamina, habits of mind, perseverance, and flat-out interest. There are children on whom doors have knocked and said, this opportunity is for you, and they have said, no thanks. And we have to honor that. There are children that just might be ready. I have one of those, who didn't want to do the work. And that is only migrating to the parent. Child is very happy. So we do have systems and processes in place to support our strong math thinkers as well as that one percent to two percent. And we also have processes in place. We are pleased to say that share our belief and will grow all learners in their math ability. We've learned that our teachers are working hard to differentiate into compacts and in grades five and six. And we also know that consistency in education is a challenge. We need to get better at consistency across classes. We do, and our teachers want help with that. Our teachers are compacting and differentiating for flexible groups of learners. We already knew this, but we were completely affirmed by the fact that our teachers have developed a really strong relationship with equipment, with making the best decisions possible. We learned that professional development is a lever that needs to access more frequently for math. We have, quite honestly, focused a lot on the loose themes. And we are very open to, and the teachers are, to looking at math. We also know that our students need to be explicitly taught that they can get better at math and that we believe that. They need to understand the value of growth mindset, and they can. They can definitely be taught about that. We've also learned that kids can be honest. If we ask them, is this too easy? They will tell us, this is too easy. So I think we need to be asking more questions, and we've talked about that. So we learned through our research that skipping standards or content does create learning gaps that are challenging to overcome. We've learned we definitely have some room for improvement. We knew this, but we learned every district does everything differently, whether it's math or kindergarten entrance assessment or reading instruction. Everybody does it differently. We learned of some really great research-based curriculum resources that are out there that are scaffolds and programmatic, unit-based ideas that will really help us with compacting and differentiating. So we're excited about that. And we, we know we need to protect some professional learning time. And we also know, and Lisa will touch on this as well, we've learned that communication and the parent coming up and that's actually going to be one of our next, you know, kind of informal meetings. We want to talk about communication and ways to get better. But there are communication aspects of this that we can get better at that will help parents understand what's happened. So we have some wonders, but we'll let Lisa, Lisa touch on those. But we, you know, when you do your research, it's always actually research. What are we looking for? What did you learn? How does it match up? But then also, what do we want to know next? So I think maybe the next slide segues into, that's kind of the research piece. Now Lisa will talk about what's going on here at Beach Road School. Some of this may be routine information for you, but it's still just cementing the knowledge for you. And then we'll head into what are we seeing at Amity.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about what's happening here at Beach Road. And like Vonda said, some of this information is probably information you may know, but I'm going to explain it hopefully a little bit different, a little bit deeper, a little bit better to help continue our ongoing conversation on mathematics instruction. So we talk a lot about both of these topics, compacting and flexible grouping. And I threw a definition up there for both of those topics we need to engage in. But as I looked at that definition of compacting, you know, here in education, we talk a lot about data. We look at data. We take data apart. We look at toehords, and we do a lot of that work. But one of the most important things that we also work hard to remember in education is that at data point, we also have time. So I will tell you that, for example, in our latest fifth-grade mathematics unit, one of the things that I learned in conversations with our two really amazing math specialists is that we had some fifth-grade students who scored really high on their most recent pre-assessment, which is something that we do in fifth grade for our compacting. But what they discovered when they looked closely is that they were solving some of those equations and really inefficiently. They got the right answer, but they did it in a way that was not the most efficient, that did not really demonstrate a deeper understanding of how to solve a problem in a way that would get them to a solution much quicker. So a kid might come home and be like, but the underlying, what's underneath that is for us as educators, so closely at that and to be like, yeah, they got a ninety-five, but they took twenty steps when they should have taken two. So I'm sharing that with you, because we do compact out in fifth grade. But we also will look closely at a student's assessment and say, you know what? Yeah, you got this right, but I know that if you spend ten minutes with me in this lesson that I'm going to make you sit through, and you might be like, I already know how to do this. But I also know that in those ten minutes, I'm going to teach you a faster, more efficient way to do this work. And then I will send you off to do some of your extensions. So I think it's important for us to remember that as educators and as parents and community members, that every single score, there's still work behind that, right? And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, another thing that we're noticing in our most recent fifth-grade unit is that the Common Core state standards don't always span. So a lot of times they are connected. You've heard me talk about sixth-grade math instruction and how a lot of the standards in sixth grade are new and different. And that, by the way, I'm going to talk about in a second in relation to flexibility thing in sixth grade. But one of the things that we also noticed is that as we look at a map of standards and we can connect it back and forward, there are some standards in fifth grade that our kiddos won't see again until like eighth grade, when they're doing more advanced math. So again, even though a student may have developed a mastery of that, we as educators sort of take it upon ourselves to be like, I just want to, just want to grab you, like, I just want to teach you, make sure, like, yeah, you showed it to me on the pre-assessment, but I want to talk to you, I want to work with you, I want to see that you really get this. Because I know that you're not going to see this again until seventh grade or eighth grade. So I think that that's also an important thing to keep in mind, that yes, we are compacting, but it's not a hard watch where we're going to completely skip these. So this is, oh, sorry, it's fifty-five. So in fifth grade, all of our fifth-grade students do stay within their homeroom for math. And we do provide support, as I mentioned, with both intervention and extension. I think it's important to notice that compacting curriculum doesn't mean that we're skipping content standards. It means that we're taking our focus from the content standards to the math practice standards, which, as Vonda mentioned earlier, are equally important, if not more so, for our mathematicians to develop. Now, the difference between the content standards is that those are the grade-level skills that we want our kiddos to know. Most of us know what those are. The mathematical practice standards are the bigger, deeper, how we want our kids to exist in this world as mathematicians and learners. And that is when we talk a lot about going deeper, we're really thinking a lot about the math practice standards. Do they involve things like modeling with mathematics with mathematics? So not only being able to like solve a word problem, but be able to think about a way to represent their thinking using a math model that's appropriate for the problem. Perseverance, when we get a problem that we don't know how to solve, what do we do? Where is our entry? How do we access? Things like, another math practice standard is attending to precision. I have a tenth-grade daughter who was very angry because she forgot the negative sign on her math problem, and her math teacher took off a whole point. And I was like, negative sign math is in tenth grade, like math is a pet in. And that's attending to precision. She got everything right. Totally understood the concept, did it all right, forgot the negative sign, lost the point. She was mad, and I was like, yeah, kind of supportive. She didn't get much support from me. But that's important, right? That's important to our mathematicians to be thinking about, because in math, precision matters. So when we talk a lot about personal compacting and going deeper, we're really thinking about those math practice standards and how we can get our students involved and engaged on those math practice standards. Now, in the end of fifth grade, our students who are identified using our protocols for pre-algebra readiness will be given the assessment. All of our parents who have qualified for that assessment will be contacted in the spring. And the students will be given the opportunity to complete that assessment. And then those students who qualify for pre-outright in sixth grade, those parents will receive an additional grant.
And that information is posted on our website, other than mathematics.
Yep, thank you. They did just a quick look at our curriculum compacting data. And as Vonda said, we do have kiddos and even have parents who have reached out to us and they have said, I actually want my kids to sit in the classroom. Or a kid who has said, you know what? I don't want to do this work. I think I need to do this work. So that does happen. So those are our two current units. And we were just talking a little bit about the unit that's in now, which is unit two. But those are our first two units in fifth grade. Now, in grade six, there are two math teachers in the grade level, because we compartmentalize in grade six. The benefit to that is that it gives those two math teachers the opportunity to work really closely with our math specialists. So they work very closely with Maureen and Carson, our two math specialists, to really dig deep into those math practice standards and the math curriculum resources. Now, as you know, our students who did qualify for pre-algebra are provided with that online learning platform. And again, one of the things that we discovered is that we had some kids going through that Alex program quickly. And and then when we dug deeper, Alex allowed me to pass on at a, at, I think, like eighty percent. This is mastered over eighty percent of the unit. I think it's pretty good to be at that. And so what we learned is that there were kids who were skipping ahead, that they were still missing twenty percent of the content. So we were able, we were going to Alex and tweak that a little bit. So it just speaks to what I was saying earlier about being a little bit more than just a number. At the end of grade six, the middle school will communicate with our families about the pre-algebra that's important, algebra readiness itself. Now, there's the question that has been asked, what will center your first student? And as Vonda mentioned, we expect it to be more of what it is it is. Two percent is about what we expect it to be. And I also want to remind everybody that we did have to align our criteria. For the first two years of the algebra, our criteria was not aligned with the middle school. When we did align it with the middle school criteria, our percentage changed.
And that's the percent of sixth graders eligible for pre-algebra based on the criteria that Benham knows. Yes, at least in this.
Yes, thank you. So just a reminder, we've all seen this data, but just a reminder, this is what our most recent smarter balance data indicates. And I did look back in here and the numbers were pretty similar. We did have a little bit of a dip in sixth grade last year, but our numbers cover in the high seventies, low eighties range across all grade levels. And I, we took a look at our STAR data. Now, for those of you hopefully you all listen, because you've been doing STAR for a while, but STAR is our universal screen that we administer to our students three times a year. It's a dipstick. It is an adapted, computer-adapted test that our students take. And we took a look at the students who were performing at level three and four, just to see how it matched up. And you can see that in STAR winter, our math scores were pretty similar to ours from the past. And then again, just within our district reference group, this is our most recent smarter balance. So we can see that we are, like folks behind us in Madison, that we are at the very top of our district of the students, our smarter balance now. So I put this point up there because, you know, at the beginning of this year, Vonda had some professional development of us as an administrative team. And one of the tasks that she asked us to do was to really think about impact and how we as administrators have an impact on the students, the schools, the teachers. And independently, we all came up with the same idea, which is backed by lots of research. It's a new method down based the ones that it's focused on. And, you know, the thinking here is that when you help teachers, when you support teachers, the teachers support the students. So for us as administrators, who are two math specialists who work really, really hard every single day, we believe deeply in raising the level of student achievement by supporting and helping with professional learning, by attending grade-level team meetings, by looking at data. Our two math specialists do this work in countless ways. They have a meeting coming up that is around intervention that they carved out, so they can have schedules to meet with specific teachers around some needs that they have. They support teachers who are new to the grade level. Whenever we shift teachers around, if a teacher has whole new grade level content to understand and learn about, our math specialists are working with them. They support teachers who are new to the district or new to teaching. So they do a lot of work to really support all individual teachers and the collective grade-level teams in addition to the work that they do around supporting students. So I wanted to put that out there, because that is another report that as administrators, we feel guilty about, and it is backed by a lot of research. Now, as Vonda mentioned, we do know, in all of this work that we have done and all of this learning, some of which is ongoing and some of which was new for us, we do know that there are ways that we can get better. So everything that I said, it's not to say that we can't get better. We all believe that we could get better. And in fact, that's why I feel like everybody becomes a teacher, right? Like we love learning. Like speaking around page, meaning like learning. So that's why we'll fill up our paper. So ways of identifying that we can continue to get better. We know that our teachers are communicating, but we've been talking a lot about what that communication can look like and who can be doing the communication. So we're talking a lot about differentiating some of our communication, even sharing with teachers and sharing with parents some of the work that their kids are doing, so that parents have a better sense of what that looks like. And also just making sure that parents know, like, reach out to the teachers. They're your first person that you should contact. They're the ones that are with your face every single day. They know what they're doing. They can answer your questions. So really sort of continuing that two-way conversation. We've had amazing opportunities to visit the middle school. Our two math specialists have gone to visit. We actually just recently visited and breathing. But we had really great opportunities to have conversations with the math teachers there. We have ongoing solo curriculum committee meetings, and that work is going to continue. Though we come away from those conversations just feeling really excited and really reflective of the work that we're doing to continue to think about our kiddos on a K-12 to do. As Vonda said, we have been already doing some work around looking at resources for compacting and flexible grouping. Our fifth grade team, I know, has been really guiding deep into differentiating homeworks. There was our sixth grade team and our fourth grade team, I know, does it as well. So we're going to continue to work at that. And we also know that we need more professional learning around. Oh, I wanted to also mention our strategic plan. Our strategic plan has two big topics that really apply across all content areas, but especially in math. One is around inventory and one is around project-based learning. And we're really unpacking that this year a lot as a tool. Well, that would also have a tremendous impact. So moving forward, here at Feature, there's a big long list here of all the things that we would like to do. Okay, closer look at. As Vonda mentioned, we did find some new resources for our learner to our mathematically minded and our compacting out or engaging in flexible group work. We're hoping to have a team teacher that is involved in this work as well. And we're also really excited to sort of engage in some more professional learning around mathematical instruction. Communication, as I mentioned, is an area that we know that we want to get better at in the midterm and stuff like that. So I wanted to make sure, Vonda and I were talking about this, and I said, I really want to make sure that they understand exactly what I'll do when I say I'm going to communicate with the community. So me as the principal, what we'll get from the D is alert the entire community with this presentation. Pretty soon, our grade five parents will get information about the acceptance in math. And we're going to get our students in their communications and how they can talk about mathematics. Something happens when I start talking here, I get really proud. Um, now, I'm going to turn it over. We're very lucky and very fortunate to have Frank Loparro here. So I'm going to turn it over again and then when he's done.
On from three. See what's happening at Feature Home School. And now we're going to see how it is pointing our learners' limit toward the high level of success at number five.
Exactly, I just wanted to say before, sorry, thanks to Vonda for inviting me in tonight and thanks to the board for having me in and to Lisa. Lisa mentioned that we do have curriculum director meetings here at the ball. And honestly, it's probably been some of the most important work, relatively new to the district the last two years. But the challenge of the regional district is having that open communication. And it's really been important to Lisa, myself, Vonda, and the Deputy Inors to get together on a more frequent basis so that we have that open transparency with the expectations are back and forth from elementary to the middle and to the high school. And those conversations are ongoing and they've been very, very fruitful. I just wanted to say thank you for that. I'm going to start really, again, my name is Frank Loparro, Superintendent for every region five. I'm going to start in kind of a broad sense. Talking about the middle school math pathways, but more specifically about the pathways to advanced math. I'll also get into our high school pathways and those high school pathways with advanced math. As I was putting this together, I wanted to show the board and the community that were listening. I wanted to show some data for a couple of different cohorts that we had. So I booked that on the seventh grade cohort from two thousand eighteen nineteen. I kind of did a where are they now in twelfth grade? And I did the same thing for a cohort from two thousand nineteen twenty, where are they now in eleventh grade? And then just as much data as I can get you regarding where, which where students are and kind of where students in the three towns would be in advanced math at the high school at this point. So let's start pretty broad, we'll get very narrow at the presentation. They already be aware of, it is available on the webpage and I have to squib it in it. But I'm going to start here so that we can have a chance to revisit it. You can see that okay. We have three different entry points for sixth graders coming into seventh, seventh grade, coming to the, coming to the middle school. The first one to the far left is our seventh grade accelerated math placement. That's essentially algebra one class for seventh grade students. Coming into that algebra one class, there's four major considerations. Okay, can you see that okay? I'm going to read it, I'll read it to you. I don't normally read the presentation, but this way, as you can see, if you can hear it. The four major considerations for placement in algebra, at least a ninety-seven percentile on what Lisa mentioned before, the STAR assessments. We are also using iReady, but we'll go to testing to use the iReady. So ninety-seven percentile, the iReady assessment as well in grades five and six. Excuse me, beating all five classroom performance criteria as rated by sixth grade teachers. There is a list, list of the classroom performance criteria below in the box. Just give you a couple of ideas of what those are. Outstanding math achievement that is greater than eighty-five percent on summit of assessments. Compliments, homework on time and with attention to detail. Perseverance toward mastery, developmentally mature, thinking abstractly, making connections. Same types of recommendations we would ask from sixth grade teachers. Meeting, excuse me, exceeding the mathematical claims as rated by sixth grade teachers on smarter balance. And also taking the pre-algebra final exam and achieving the grade or B plus or higher. So that's placement into algebra one for seventh grade. The second entry point would be seventh grade advanced math. Essentially, that's a pre-algebra placement in seventh grade. Instead of four considerations, you have three major considerations. It's an eighty-third percentile on STAR and iReady. It's four out of the five classroom type performance criteria that are listed in the box below. And it's meeting or exceeding as back mathematical claims that's rated by sixth grade teachers. And then the last entry point would be seventh grade math, or sometimes we refer to as seventh grade comp math. And that's your direct placement from sixth grade math. Parents or students that are placed into seventh grade comp math, there's also an opportunity for students to wave those, their students into the pre-algebra program if they chose to do so. Right through seventh grade, where's the next placement? From seventh grade accelerated math or the algebra one program, the students meeting criteria. And when I say criteria, it's traditional, traditionally it'd be plus or better. The recommendation would be to have a student move forward into geometry in eighth grade. Seventh grade advanced math or pre-algebra, again, meeting the criteria. And the student's recommendation would advance to algebra one. Even if the student didn't receive the grade level recommend, the grade level criteria or the teacher recommendation, parents still have the option of waving students into algebra one from that pre-algebra program. And then in seventh grade math or seventh grade comp math, students would bid eighth grade math. However, there are two other options under this particular placement. Option one would be somewhere around the mid-year, the student is performing exceedingly high in seventh grade comp. The recommendation would be made to students move them to pre-algebra at the mid-year. Or at the end of the year, the student, the student went, again, performed very well and performed well all year long. It will be given an assessment. There will be some summer work provided by the teacher. And with that recommendation, it would then advance to pre-algebra very well. This is what it looks like on a line. I thought it would be much easier for me to speak through it once I saw this and I said, here's, can't just put this up for you. It's a lot of air and thoughts. So what I essentially explained to you is this, is this chart, students chart, and it goes first and so. Up to high school pathways with advanced math. I just wanted to make a note here that students, whether students are in seventh grade math comp, advanced math, excuse me, students are placed in advanced math, seventh grade math or accelerated math. Every one of those groups that I showed to, every one of those entry points, all the students do have a pathway to calculus by the time they're seniors in high school. And I'll take you through some of what that, how that happened. So in the next slide, we'll take a look at the overview of the high school math path. We'll trace that current, current path for grade seven for work in two thousand nineteen and do the same for grade seven for work. These students, example one of a high school math pathway. This would be the student that took algebra in seventh grade, geometry in eighth grade. The question would be, what would they have progressed from ninth, tenth, from eleventh grade? Students took geometry in the eighth grade, would move on to algebra two. Honors typically for calculus honors in tenth grade, calculus AP in the eleventh grade and AP statistics. The student took pre-algebra in the eleventh grade, and that was in the algebra class in eighth grade. Movement would be into geometry in the ninth grade, algebra two in tenth grade, pre-calculus in the eleventh grade, and AP calculus in the twelfth grade. Very often I put AP statistics there too. We do have students that would take both math in their twelfth grade year, called AP calculus and AP calculus. In terms of students who would take the seventh grade math or the seventh grade comp and move on to eighth grade math, we have a few different options in this case. We've seen students take all three of these different pathways in their twelfth grade. First, probably the most straightforward, given with progress from seventh grade comp to eighth grade comp math. Then to algebra one in ninth grade, geometry in tenth grade, algebra two in the eleventh grade, and calculus in twelfth. Again, if the goal was to reach calculus by the twelfth grade, seventh grade math would progress to eighth grade math. Then in ninth grade, algebra one, with an option to take geometry over the summer, which was in the ninth and tenth grade year. And then the student would have to take the midterm and final assessment for geometry to get, to get their movement into algebra two. It certainly, James Gettle, who's two years tenth grade year, meeting that criteria. Eleventh grade, he would take pre-calculus in the twelfth grade, leading to the AP calculus. And yeah, and that is another option we've seen students here would be to progress from seventh grade math to eighth grade math, to algebra one in the ninth grade, and then to double math in the tenth grade, geometry and algebra two, pre-calculus in the eleventh, and then twelfth calculus in twelfth. I mentioned that I wanted to trace the whole part. I was, I was putting this together, thinking, okay, we'll look back and see students who were sitting in geometry, where, where are they now? So in the eighteen nineteen school year, we actually had four students that were in geometry in the eighth grade. That means, that means that they were in algebra one in seventh grade. Because this was the eighteen nineteen school year. All four of those students progressed to AP calculus by grade eleven and then AP statistics by grade four. Want to do the same thing for our current eleventh graders. Look back to two thousand nineteen twenty, there were two students in geometry at that time. Those two students right now in our eleventh grade, one is in AP calc AB, the other one is AP calculus. Did that two thousand eighteen nineteen cohort, we looked at students who were in pre-algebra in seventh grade and then the algebra in the eighth grade. You can see the breakdown here in the chart. These are students that are currently in grade twelve. Again, we're students who had pre-algebra in seventh, algebra in eighth. Right now, we have nine that are in pre calc level one, one for their calculus level one, one in one in calc AB, AP AB, eleven in AP calc EBS, and one for AP stats. I tried to do a small summary here, but about one hundred and nineteen students that were enrolled in pre-algebra in seventh grade in eighteen nineteen, eighty-nine of those students right now are enrolled in course in grade in pre calc level one, AP statistics in the twelfth. Quick question, AB versus CC? Yes. Which is the differentiation? So I think the easiest way to say it is BC is probably the more rigorous of the two. Can't take both courses. I think of BC as kind of, I think of it as ABC. So if you're taking the BC, you're getting very the A, B, and C. If you're taking the AB, you're getting a smaller subset of that. So I would say that the PC is more intense. Again, for current eleventh graders, these were students that were in pre-algebra in seventh grade in two thousand nineteen twenty school year. And then algebra in eighth grade. Right now, in eleventh grade, we have thirteen that are eligible one level one, fifty-six in pre calc level one, twenty-eight pre calc level honors, and one right now in the junior year, AP calc AB. Typically, the students that you see in algebra two level one will progress on to pre calc level one. Students that are in pre calc level one, really depending on their level of performance in that grade level, can move into AP calc, calc level one, or AP stats. You see, they're going in three directions from there. The students in pre calc level honors typically go into one of the two AP calc classes. And then the students that could AP, oh, AB would likely take AP stats. These are students that were in seventh grade math and then eighth grade math. So these were students in seventh grade math in the eighteen nineteen school year. Where are they sitting perfectly in their twelfth grade? And just giving you the advanced math sizes, pre calc and higher. We have nineteen of those students that are pre calc level one in twelfth grade, three that are calculus level one in twelfth grade, one that is AP calc AB, one in statistics, sixteen in statistics level one, and one in AP stats. So there is a progression from seventh grade comp math to the highest levels of math that students likely achieve it. We're up pathways together and we do have students that are certain, certain, sitting in some of those classes now. I wanted to also fill the eleventh grade for you. These are current eleventh grader, seventh grader that were in nineteen, two thousand nineteen twenty school year, in seventh grade comp math and then eighth grade math. Right now, we have twenty-one students down to the two level one, one in pre calc level honors. And again, the same level applies to the ones with two level one, who are making pre calc level one, pre calc honor. Only pre calc level honors will likely proceed that easy. So I think the general question, and I wanted to do some specific slides here, just for Whitbridge. These students are removed all levels over time with the data that I've got. I wanted to pull what I've got here. Over the last two years, the last two years, twelve Whitbridge students started off in seventh grade math comp or in pre-algebra in seventh grade. And by their ninth grade year, they had moved into some type of advanced or accelerated math. We have been moved from that seventh grade comp or seventh grade pre-algebra to the accelerated pathways by the ninth grade. Of course, the twelve one for students. The board is going to look really small. I'm going to do my best to summarize for you, but with this, with these last few pages, the data will show you math enrollment in general over the last three years. So I tried to give you some three-year trend data. So the first one, what you'll see is the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The blue represents grade ten, the red bar represents grade eleven, and the gray bar represents grade twelve. And these are the number of students total in each of the grade levels that are in AP enrolled courses. The first set being the two thousand twenty-one school year, two thousand twenty-two school year, two thousand twenty-three school year. The totals are below, but the first set of data will let me tie it down to the end of the twelfth grade. In the year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one hundred and sixty-one students sitting in AP courses. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, one hundred and fifty-six students in AP courses. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, this school year, one hundred and twenty-seven students in AP courses. This next one gets a little bit more specific. I'll do my best to explain it if you can't see it. This is by course, so this is AP math enrollment by course by year. So the red bars in this case, the blue, excuse me, the bars in this case, the blue represents. So the red bars in this case, the blue, excuse me, the bars in this case, the blue represents the 2021 school year, the red represents the 2022, 23, and the gray is the 23, 24 in our current school year. And these are the courses that the AP courses and the number of students in each of those courses. The first set is our AP calc AB. And I won't do all of these for you, but in 2021, we had 30 students. In 2022, the red bar, 34, and this year, we have 30 students in AP calc dilson. Data set for each of these, as you go across. The second set is your AP calc EBS. The third data set is your AP computer science principles. The fourth data set is AP computer science, that's a call A, it's a type of AP computer science. And then AP stats is the last set. Pretty consistent numbers over time. Most of these data going to trending into three-year, three-year set for those AP courses that are listed for that. This is AP performance by year. So the first set of data from the left hand side are students who are receiving As in AP courses. Well, I think a quick summary on this is the majority of students that are sitting in AP courses are receiving As in these, over here, two, for status set. And again, the pretty large represent the math students. Right, my district, this is AP enrollment by town, and this is our three-year trend. So what you're seeing here, the left bar in each of the two bar sets, the left, the left one is number of students from each, broken down by each of the towns. The blue represents Bethany, the orange represents Orange, and the yellow is Green, represents Woodbridge. So that's the number of students that are in AP courses, excuse me, that's the number of students from that town in grades 10, 11, and 12. The bar directly next to it is the number of students from that town that are in AP courses. To the left, we have number of students in grades 10, 11, and 12 from that town. The bar to the right is the number of students in AP courses. We wanted to look specifically at Woodbridge. Insistently, your proportion of students compared to the number of students that are in 10, 11, and 12 is pretty consistent across the board. It sits somewhere around 20% of the students that are in 10th grade, 10, 11, and 12. 20% of the students are AP courses. Quite honestly, the highest percentage of the three elementary districts that come into our, into our high school. Although Orange has a larger number of students that are AP courses, well, a larger number of students in grades 10, 11, and 12, so the proportion is actually lower. It's probably somewhere around 12, 13%. And Bethany is somewhere around 18%. When I was thinking, if I just showed this year, we took all the students that are enrolled in AP classes, and then we just said, okay, this is the percentages from each of the town this year. Only about 46% of the students in AP are in Orange, only 3% in Woodbridge. Keep me here, I should be putting that out there, I can do this well. I enjoy doing this, but I just, I tried to pull as much as I could for you, just to give you a sense of where things are. It was good for me too. I don't think it's been done nambly for us in a long time. It's the kind of numbers that I want to stay on top of for all of them. That's a topic that I asked to get me a lot of, to mine a lot of this data. Only let's keep this on a more regular basis, so I have a better sense looking forward. So we don't have to comb back through three years to find it. But it's good data for us to talk about. It's good data for me to keep down there, we're probably staying above. And I'll certainly continue to work upon it and Lisa about these, that we continue to keep those numbers still. Or we're willing to make this still.
Frank, I want to thank you before we even ask questions. It is rare. I used to work in a regional district like this, and to get somebody from the secondary level of, you know, the superintendent or assistant superintendent to come down is rare. But to do the legwork, to crunch the numbers, to help us see that what we are doing is working really well is extraordinary, and we're very grateful.
My pleasure.
Thanks. So I'm going to open up for board member's questions. Frank, either to you or to Lisa. So I'm going to start, more than any question. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm all of them. And we think that they're fairly designed by noble, I'll do a little more, how that you, you're, you're today. So I think it was helpful, sorry, I think it'd be helpful for the parent community to see those pathways to calculus, because I know that's something people are, as far as there, there is access to having those pathways for math. So I think that, that would really help. Eric?
Yeah, I think one question that I had asked, if, do we have the data on for our kids going from sixth and seventh? What percentage go into seventh purpose versus pre-algebra? That was. That was in sixth grade. So my, yeah, my question would be mainly because the, to get into seventh grade pre-algebra, it seems like, at least from what I read and then what you showed, a lot of it is based on teacher recommendations. Your test scores have to be at, I think, 83% or something like that, but then also teacher recommendations. So I'm just curious, when we are passing our kids to the next district, how many of those kids are going into seventh grade standard? I don't know the terminology, comp versus seventh grade pre-algebra? Kind of where that initial differentiation happens? I was curious. I think that'd be good data for the board to have.
Thanks. This time, but all of your presentations will be available, but we can see those parts.
Absolutely, you can see it much better.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions, please do.
Yeah, I, I thank you all for a very, very thorough and helpful presentation. And I will just say, I mean, I work with data, and those final charts, what it said to me and what it showed clearly, and you made the point, is Woodbridge is disproportionately represented in AP math within the AMITD system. And I think it's not surprising, given the data that Lisa showed, where we're ranked top in our DIRG in terms of math performance. Like, this is directly connected. So I also, you know, very much appreciated the pathways, but what it said to me as well is it is so critical to get it right at the K6 level. And as long as you do that, you can be on the pathway to high performance in later years, but you've really got to get it right. That's absolutely the takeaway for me, and we're really doing that, which I think is great. Lisa, the other point I really appreciated, and it was so, with, with any of these discussions, I think we can all have those moments where we go back to like, oh, if I could do it over. And I'm thinking, yeah, how many times did I get the answer right with 20 steps? You know, because I had them decent aptitude, but that doesn't mean I ever learned the concepts that would have gotten me there much more quickly and that would have helped me later on. So, you know, so appreciated at that point, so thank you all.
Yeah.
No, thank you all for the great information. Thank you for the respect and concern, reaching around. So if I could just have a recap, what exactly changed? Lots of information given, or about what changed? Yeah, for this year, what we haven't planned for.
This, I'm just going to move over to our fifth today. So for this year, there is not dramatic change. What we have been focusing on, as we have been digging in and doing this work, is looking at the resources that we are using for compacting and flexible grouping. We have been looking at our homework and making sure that our homework is more differentiated. Because one of the things that we did sort of discover in this journey is that the students were compacting out, but then often getting some of the same work rather than some differentiated homework. So we've really been addressing that and looking for those resources. Our fifth grade students, another thing that is different, is that the fifth grade students who are compacting out are currently working with one of our math specialists in either a pull-out or pushing model. She does both, she pulls them out to work with them, and sometimes she also goes to their classroom to work with them. So that is also a change. And then I think moving forward, some of the other work that we're going to work on addressing is that communication piece that I highlighted. And we're also going to look at just purchasing some resources that are, that can help raise the level of some of our instructions for our curriculum compacting and our flexible grouping.
Sorry, I need to. Or, or a question? So the, I heard a lot of language, and I saw this in some of the public comment that was submitted, some of the letters around extensions, compacting curriculum, enrichment, tracks, differentiation, some of these, these terms are, you know, being used a lot. You did an awesome job with the definitions, and I'm just wondering if some of those best practices and instructional strategies, we talked a little bit about the, the communication, could be clarified a little bit, because I did notice a lot of education terms that were being used, whether in sometimes, some cases accurately and inaccurately, even in some of the communications where it makes me wonder if parents really understand that there's a lot of instructional strategies at work that are offering students these different kinds of opportunities, but I wouldn't use any of these terms because they need to be defined. But I'm just wondering if there's a way to do that through the district website and some of the curriculum, you know, curriculum documents that are on the website to maybe clarify some of that, because there's definitely a lot of terms flying around about math.
We do. But yeah, that's helpful. That's why we definitely, there could be, but that's helpful to back up, we definitely here with our communicating. And I also think some points that I was trying to make about how you can get a site for it, get compacted out, but you might still need some additional work. Like, I think that's important too. So yeah, so we'll think through how we can move that out. Jeff, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, great. That might be helpful on the website as well. Yep, not, yeah.
Right, Jay? Any questions or comments? You're muted, Jay. Hang on a minute. Anthony's working on, I'm using this dead, and you too, Mike.
I hope you can hear me now.
Excellent.
I sound like a Verizon commercial. Uh, thank you, Frank, thank you, Lisa. It's great to see the bridge between the two schools, school systems. Um, I had a very, very quick question, I think, that takes both of you into account. What I kept hearing was 1% to 2% of the population was that subset that required this additional AP type of education in the seventh grade. And what I noticed is Lisa presented the chart that we've seen before that showed that we are top of the group. I think we're second of all DIRGs, if I'm rightly so. Frank presented some excellent data where he said that we almost had about 46% of the students in AP classes. Now, when I quickly looked at the numbers of students that Frank presented, Frank, your presentation was excellent, but very fast. When I quickly looked at the numbers of students, I noticed that proportionally, that was very, very high. So when people say 1% to 2%, I think they refer to the population. And what I would argue is that from the data you've presented, we don't represent the population. We're a sample that seems to be the right tail of the distribution. So I would like us to rethink that 1% to 2%, because clearly, the data right through the high school seemed to suggest to me that we have a sizable group of students who are capable and able to take advanced classes, and this is what I'm hearing from parents. And so if we could sort of take a look at that a little more closely and not stick with the 1% to 2%, I think it might be a little higher, is what I'm going to say. And that may make this algebra, pre-algebra class that we're looking to hold next year more viable. The other question I had for Frank, that was just the point, that the next question I had for Frank was that how many students taking the algebra exemption exam from Beecher and the other schools, the Orange District, actually made it through the exam? What percentage? Because that would help, I think, parents understand whether their child was able to get through. Because I recall a number of years back, parents were telling me that they were getting the high scores, the S-BAG scores. They were getting excellent recommendations, but they just weren't passing the, what do I call it, the exemption exam is probably the best way to describe it.
Placement, placement, replacement exam. I don't know the statistics offhand. Certainly, I think, I don't, I think this is true for all of us in this room and you as well. I mean, we just want to make sure we're placing the students in the, the best class we'll place for them to perform well. But I don't know that, I don't know the statistics offhand. Certainly, we probably take a closer look at that.
Yeah, I think that would help parents understand what is required and to put realistic expectations on getting into that class.
Thanks, Jay.
I think that was it for now. That was really an excellent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and Jay. Mike, anything? Hang on a minute, Mike, work on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I want to also thank you both for that great presentation. It was great to hear Frank's presentation as well, because I feel like that's been kind of a missing piece in our discussion around this, is hearing how all this aligns with middle school and hearing it directly from an administrator there. So that was very helpful, and Lisa, your presentation was very thorough and informative as well. So thank you both. Um, I just had one small question and a comment, and the, the question had to do with the criteria for getting into the various levels in seventh grade for math. You presented some test scores that, that students had to, our thresholds on test scores that students had to cross. And you mentioned recommendations. Are all of those, all of those required and weighted equally? So for example, a student crosses the threshold on the test scores, but a teacher says, yeah, I don't think that they're really ready. Is, are all of those things equally required? So a, a student needs to have crossed these thresholds and have consistent recommendations from teachers that state that they're ready to move to this level?
Just, just looking at the, just relooking back at the entry points for sixth graders into seventh graders, a lot of them are based on some type of benchmark, more so than, than necessarily just a teacher recommendation. And I don't want to take, I don't want to say just a teacher recommendation, but certainly that matters. But a lot of the considerations that are in play have, have some specific benchmarks associated with them, like the 97th percentile, scoring within the 97th percentile on their universal screener, the STAR or IREAD assessment, specifically the math planes that are part of the smarter balance assessments. And, and then passage with a B+ or better on the, on the pre-algebra final. Certainly, we want to know what the teachers' recommendations are, but a lot of those, a lot of the benchmarks are mathematical. criteria that are based on assessment that the students will be exposed to of both fifth and sixth grade. But I, I don't want to say they're weighted more, but a lot of the considerations are, are in that, in that, in those categories.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Um, and then the, the, the comment I had had to do with the communication um, to, to families. One thing that I think would be really important with regard to the course that we would maybe most likely offer next year, depending on the number of students, um, is um, the um, the um, potential risks and benefits of um, moving a child to that class and skipping some content. So you presented some of those findings today. Um, Lisa, uh, about that, I think that would be important information for parents to know when they're deliberating about what they're going to do with their child, um, if they were to qualify for this advanced placement.
Thank you.
Can I just say something quickly? I, I, I know the district is considering um, programming that and just with me, I don't know the, the specifics of it, but I think when you pulled the data from my level, a lot of times you wonder what you're gonna find. Um, and so I think the one thing, my message would be to Woodbridge is like, it was, it was, it was good overall, meaning you have some consistent data over a three-year trend that's showing pretty strong placement in AP courses proportionally to your population at school. Um, you know, that's, that's the kind of data you want to look at. You don't want to look at a decreasing trend over a three-year period. You want to see consistency or increasing over a three-year period. You're, you're right in that wheelhouse. So I mean, that was, that was a good findings to come here and report. Just wanted to make a point, just wanted to say that. I know you see it, but that's the kind of stuff when I'm pulling data, I'm like, okay, that looks really good for them. So it's good for them. It's just something they should know.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My only comment is besides a fabulous thorough overview of everything and some key data and information being shared that I thanked before on, on behalf of everyone for it. Um, the work is going into this is really going to be amazing. So I'd like to let all of our new graduate students and math specialists and teachers who have worked in the industry as well. Um, my one comment is that I'm happy that we talked about communication as well. The key, um, having been in the classroom with T is um, for the parents to be communicating with the teacher and talking to the teachers about their kids and their performance. All, all of that, that especially in this instance in math. So I, your ability to encourage that to happen, um, I think would be very helpful. So thanks.
Thank you both.
Hey, thank you.
By the end of the week, you'll have these posted on the website and we'll send out a few pictures where they can be found.
Thank you, Vanda. Um, do you want to move on, Vanda, now to kindergarten entrance age?
I will. I'm just gonna go thank Frank. Okay. That gratitude management. Okay. Okay. Kindergarten entrance. So we were, again, we were excited to come here tonight. We were excited for this math information. We were so excited for our presentation. We're excited that tomorrow we are kicking off the first of our kindergarten assessment blocks. So this information is also posted on the website. When you go to kindergarten registration, it pops right up. There's a fancy, fancy little chart. And it covers um, some great information that I also put in board book. But just to keep everybody posted, you know, as required as part of the new kindergarten entrance age requirement, um, we've reviewed the written parental requests received and our process begins tomorrow for the children who have a birth date between September second twenty twenty-four and January first twenty twenty-five, September eight. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. This information is posted on our website. Today we have about fifteen parent letters requesting this process and these children will start to come in tomorrow in three different sessions. Um, you know, for like an hour chunk of time, the process will be conducted by kindergarten teachers and some related service staff. And it will include a period of play for the children, um, in a period of kind of like informal assessment. The parents will not be present. There may be some tears on the parents' part, but they'll be in another area, um, filling out a parent questionnaire and giving us some additional information on their children as to why they feel they're ready for kindergarten. So once we have that information, it will be reviewed and parents will receive information following up regarding that process. It's outlined on the list. Like I, I believe it's the second week of March, so they'll give us a couple of weeks to look it over and then the parents will have that information to make their decision. So we're very excited to meet our potential newest ones.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board on kindergarten entrance? Danny? Move on to the Connecticut State Department of Education's education recruitment.
Okay. So I've been trying to keep the board apprised, our, our weekly update that another one of the state mandates um, this year required each district to do something that, that quite honestly, we've pretty much had in place, but they've asked us to document it. So we are documenting it. We've worked with the BOA superintendent. We've attended training sessions and information sessions and worked with each other. It's been very good for us as a team. But this mandate asks us to document our hiring processes in a specified template, which I put into board book for you all to see. We have to use that template. And it asks us to break out our um, efforts to work on increasing educated diversity in the areas of recruitment, retention and hiring. You know, so we've already had, you know, we have a great equity policy and we have things in place. I did give you an overview of the required theory of action that we developed as a BOA group and our goals. So the goals that we selected also were identified as a BOA group. So our goals of recruitment and hiring and selection and retention um, are all the same. And then I, I shared with you our strategies and then we will dump that into a template. So ultimately you will see our final approved by the state. They do approve, really. We're approving the process of a submission. The state will collect these on March fifteenth. We have to submit it in that little template. And I actually have to put the date of this board meeting where hopefully you give us permission to submit it, just as we did with the teacher evaluation. Um, and then they start to give us feedback and we make revisions. So the state actually gave us the order in for the motion tonight so that, you know, it said just make sure that everybody can read their timelines, encourage your superintendent approval motion to include any suggestions that the state made. They'll make suggestions back and forth between now. They said May, now they're kind of stretching it out to maybe June or a little bit later. Ultimately, we will have a plan from every district uploaded in a common area on the state website as well as our own will be posted on our website. And you'll see it looks almost identical to Bethany, Orange and Amity. Um, Amity has just a couple of additional, like, you know, senior internship mentor things that are a little bit more specific to high school. So I am here to share with you that that is our, these are our goals and strategies and this is the template that we need to push it into. Um, when you put it in here, it does not print out user friendly and it's the spreadsheet that I gave you.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to um, read the motion as suggested by the certification. Um, and then we'll have discussion. Um, I move that we approve the Connecticut State Department of Education recruitment hiring plan, flash hiring plan as submitted by the superintendent and authorized the superintendent to make any plans, revisions, et cetera, as suggested by the PSE. Do I have a second to that motion? Okay, Lauren. Motion made by Lauren, seconded by Lauren Franchi. Any discussion or question? Okay, um. Oh, Jay, go ahead.
Um, Fonda, I just had a quick question. Uh, why are we, is there a rationale for going as a BOA district rather than as a Woodbridge district? I'm sure there is.
But there, well, there is. One would be that I believe that the work is better when it's done together. Um, the work was, it's, it's actually pretty extensive and so we, we work together on our theory of action. We work together on our goal. We are actually, we often kind of pull staff from each other's pool. People kind of cross populate. So we felt like we are all looking, we have the same general population. So we are looking, you know, kind of in the same vein to, we all had the same relative goals. We all had the same interests. So we brought our own ideas to the table. We found out they were all very similar and said, nobody, we don't have, there are other districts that have people that do this work. In, in, in your district, it's the superintendent. In other districts, you know, it, 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 it might be Frank working with somebody else at Amity. In, in these small districts, there is strength in numbers.
So on that point, I did have a question that if we are pulling, sort of pulling from the same resource, aren't we in competition for the same candidates? Does that create a conflict?
We're in competition with everybody in Connecticut that lives near us. We are, it, it is a teacher's market. I, it, it's the truth. Um, so this really isn't about pulling staff. It's how are we going to bring people into our district that reflect our student body? And how are we going to try to keep them? Those are all best educational practices. You know, the Connecticut team model that supports our beginning teachers, we have some really good practices in place. So for whatever reason, the state decided this would be a great mandate to put out there that everybody documented it. All I can imagine is that there are districts that are not as far ahead with equity policies and hiring practices that we are. That, that's all I can imagine, honestly.
Yeah, this is why I felt a differentiation would be the approach we would use. And so that would put us apart from our competitors Orange Elementary Schools, the Amity District itself, because as you keep telling us, this is a good school district and people want to come here. Teachers want to work here, staff want to work here. So that would differentiate us.
Right. Well, we don't really get the same people as Amity because their certifications are different.
Right. So that's why, again, I was sort of, I was just puzzled. Why would we go together on this? Rather than not just create our own when we do have such a strong policy in place already.
Yeah, I, I believe our product is much better, much better than, than when done together than it would be having looked at some of the other small districts tracks. Good question.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm going to say all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Ms. Sherman, Teacher Road School update. Always the highlight of our
A lot of really exciting things to share with you since our last board meeting. The word of the day's term. Um, I'm going to start by talking a little bit about our second grade learners. They recently did a really beautiful presentation of their nonfiction learning. It was their nonfiction reading and writing celebration. And they had all created these amazing posters and they invited the entire second grade community and the MAG community also. And they all met up at the board and they were taking notes and they were learning from the posters. So they're with research hyenas and cheetahs and lemurs and sea animals. And one fact, just in case you didn't know this, that I learned is that chipmunk cheeks can stretch up to three times the size of a pen. If you don't know that, for waiting for second grade learners. So that is um, one example of how we celebrate our reading and writing work via nature after we complete unit. For the hundredth day of school, it's also happened. Yep, which, which also happened. We had lots of different activities. So our kindergartners did lots of different activities with pups and um, they did the pup stacking and dot painting and they were making a hundred feet necklaces. And so they were very excited about the hundredth day of school. They made a hundred days of fun. So that was really the fantastic activities. For our MAG parents, we had the MAG Energy Museum, which was um, just time blowing, you know, marked events learned and research and presented. Families were invited to come in and attend. And then they actually did it again the next day and they let the students go around, the MAG students go around and see. So the MAG Energy Museum included learning around circus, wind energy, solar power. They had um, next kit set up, they have built, if it was like picking up water, it was, it was amazing. A lot of people did, they had a super fun. So I wanted to um, acknowledge Mrs. Wyman, second grade classroom, who wrote a persuasive letter to the principal. And they had asked her, said that it would be a really great unifying activity if we could have that. And so, you know, they worked together, they worked with Mrs. Wyman in writing a note. And I walked back into my office and I had a note that was this large, my office, that said, dear principal, we think it would be really great if we could have a hat day and it would be fun for everyone. So this past Friday, it was the Spirit Day School and we had announced, well, actually before I announced the whole school, we had written a note back to them and we put it back in there for lunch. So when they came back from, I believe it was lunch, they saw it there and they were very excited to hear. They were so excited. They made posters around school, letting kids know that it was going to be hat day and they were just so excited to go through. So a big shout out to Mrs. Wyman's classroom who asked for a hat day. And, you know, we're able to share why it would be great to be announced and many students and faculty um, to partner on hat day. So thank you to Mrs. Wyman. Big success. Um, I also want to highlight our fourth grader because all of our fourth grade musicians did a little mini concert and you know, I always love the way Mr. Paul brought that up with mini concert because he really showed where the students would come in in fourth grade, where they had actually been held in a camp, they could be a lot of them together to actually play um, small songs. And it's a really beautiful journey of their musical experiences so far at future. So that also happened. The kids were very nervous. I was talking to all of them, four, and they were like, it works. But they all did it. They did a really, really great job. And so they were super proud of our fourth graders too. And then one important thing coming up that we want to mention is Read Across America Week. So we are hoping that some of our board members are able to join us. It's happening on Wednesday, March sixth at nine AM. We have some community members joining us. We have some high school kiddos coming from the Amity teaching, there's an Amity teaching club. Well, I discovered that. But no, we're very excited. There is some high school visitors coming. We have some um, it's gonna be a really great day of reading celebration. And we also have some sort of fun things happening throughout the week. So Read Across America Week is coming and our own teacher celebration is on Wednesday and we hope on board. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for?
Other highlights of our case this week. It sounds like wonderful learning and fun going on at the children's school as always, ladies. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is Teacher Road School Town Building Committee update, Mr. View.
I always follow the BRS updates. It, it is, it is. That is exciting. Um, so the town building committee met twice, one on the twelfth and on the sixteenth past week. Um, under the new leadership of our chair, Brian Madonna, a very familiar new to us. under the new leadership of our Chair, Brian Madonna, a very familiar need to us all to offer them. We amended our charge to include the head specs and feasibility study. So we'll be taking our arms around that, only with that moving forward. And then we also approved the plan for the roof replacement as per needed grant. So we are in motion for that. Hopefully we can bring that to the people.
Perfect. Such a segue to welcoming David Stein, our friend from Silver Petch Shelly, who is joining us this evening. Because we need to approve the Teacher Road School Roof Replacement Plan so that it can be submitted for the two states.
Correct. One of the grant requirements is that the Board of Ed approves plans.
Good. So David, I don't know if you have anything we want to, we see him.
I see him right now.
Yeah, 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 okay. Wave in his hand. I think we're trying to sound muted, David. Wonderful.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Yeah, good evening, everybody. I think really all we're looking for today is the acknowledgement of the Board of Ed to vote on behalf of the roof replacement project to advance this to the Office of Grants Administration, which allows us to have a plan completion test, which right now is currently scheduled for March 7. So once we have your official approval, we will prepare the remaining forms with the superintendent and be ready for that March 7 date. Anticipation, probably a week or two thereafter, we would get their official approval to go out to bid. And once that's the case, we would advertise this publicly and solicit roofing contractors for anticipation of doing work and starting essentially right the last day of school as all the buses exit out. Contractors would be starting to take advantage of the short summer season that we now have upon us. So we are in a good period of time to be able to start bidding a project. So we do anticipate fairly decent coverage with contractors, although there are a lot of districts out there that are just like you, racing to get out to bid. So, you know, we'll see where, we'll see where our project lands. What was presented to you, I believe, as part of your packet that was presented to the building committee were the plans, the written specifications and the estimate. So that is there in front of you if there's any questions related to that. But this is really sort of a pro forma of the Board of Ed just acknowledging the permission for this to start. And then it would come back once we do have a contractor will report as to where we are as it relates to the budget. So this does not lock you into anything financially. It's really just a approval to go to acknowledge that if the project moves forward, the state, the state knows that you've had an opportunity to at least review the plans and the specs and the estimates.
Thanks, David. I'll just remind the board that we, we will get 32% reimbursement from the state for the roof.
Stop the classes for that. Thank you, David. Board members, I'll just let you know there were like hundreds of pages. I hope you read every single one of that. But if you didn't have the opportunity to do that, I would let you know that David gave a fine overview to the building committee at its class meeting. And they voted for the approval as well. That will be going forward for the state reimbursement required. So Jeff, you want to make that motion?
Waiting for the moment for a while. I'll make the motion that we move to approve the estimate, plan, and specifications as presented by Silver Petch Spelling Associates dated February 14th, 2024 for project number 1670026RR.
RR for roof replacement. Do I have a second to that? Stephen? Made by Jeff Yu, seconded by Stephen Lauren. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Being none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the approval, please signify by raising your hand. I'm noting that both Mike and Jay have their hands raised remotely. And the motion passed unanimously. David, I thank you ever so much for hopping on this evening. I know you have another meeting and so I would appreciate you taking the time for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, David.
Bye bye.
You're up, Mike. Curriculum committee.
Well, we met on the first at 4:00 p.m. And, well, Lisa did all of the heavy lifting for me. So we talked about the math course. So everything that we discussed then was spoke, talked about today by Lisa and Vonda. And thanks for Frank again.
That also was very, I think, well attended meeting and great information was presented at that committee meeting. So thanks to the people who were participants in that meeting and for the information that was shared.
Finance Committee.
All right, well, we are well over half of our fiscal year's complete. Of course, everything is, all is owed to Donna for keeping us on track. So the overall highlight is our projected budget savings for all categories combined is currently estimated at $241,000, which is down from $295,000 in January. And this is primarily due to changes in the salaries and other purchase services, which I'll discuss. So on the lower expense side, meaning where we're getting the surplus, we currently in that 100 series of salary savings of approximately $131,000, which is down about $24,000 from last month. Now, this, the positive side of this is that we've been able to hire one new para educator in January, which is great. Plus, we have two new sixth grade teachers who are hired at a slightly higher rate. And of course, we want to note, as always in this category, is our unbudgeted SRO, where, although we have savings in other categories from this. For the 200 series, benefits are currently on track, but will likely, and will likely end up with surplus due to other unfilled para positions. However, we're now estimating a surplus of $71,000, which is up from $29,000 last month. Now, while insurance costs are consistent with what was budgeted, our cost for SEEMers, which I will note stands for the Connecticut Municipal Employees Retirement System, because I'd never actually looked that up and finally did, have gone down. So we had budgeted for the original rate indicated by the state. However, they've since lowered that, leading to the savings. The 300 series, we have purchased professional services, $100,000 savings with the change in the SRO model. However, this was down about, from about $122,000 surplus in January. The very good reason for this is that we've committed to using about $20,000 of our surplus to fund the first two phases of the CSG proposal. Yay. 400 series purchased property services were currently projected savings of $52,000. That's up from $8,000 in January. The winter's been a bit warmer than expected so far, although I don't know if the last two weeks count. And we anticipate utility savings due to the fact that the pool filters have not been running. And I don't know that the pool's going to be open anytime soon. For the 700 series furniture and equipment, we are, we are, we were showing a, we were showing a surplus. However, we now anticipate spending all of those funds, which is good. This is for equipment. Dues and fees, the 800 series are currently on track. Miscellaneous expenses, miscellaneous expenses, which is primarily the Ezra Nurse, is on track. That's 900 series. All right, on the higher expense side of the ledger, 500 series other purchase services, we're anticipating being about $100,000 over budget as additional outplace tuition as well as transportation expenses continue to come in. So basically, we're estimating with the budget. And then as the bill in fact roll in, Donna is able to make revision to get us closer to the actual number. And then finally, for the 600 series, materials and supplies will be over by about $15,000. This is in part due to testing supplies. And also, there is an outstanding custodial supply blanket PO, although this may later come down some. That's the overall summary. Vonda, anything you care to add?
Did a great job.
You did a great job.
Any questions?
I would add when we talked about the addition, the new hired teachers. You said they came in higher, they just came in higher than I would estimate. We would hire them, so not higher compared to the teachers who resign.
Very good.
Any questions? You have a question, Vonda? Okay, we'll move on to Paul.
The Policy Committee met on February 5. We discussed policy number 5111, which basically addresses kindergarten enrollment and making sure that our policy was in alignment with the new legislation that passed. And then while we were looking at this policy, we also just made it clear kind of what documents could be used to ensure residency and show residency. And so did some minor touchups to just do a thorough job in terms of reviewing this policy and making sure that everyone had a clear understanding of what documents are required for residency and then also what the process was going to be for requesting a review of having your kinder, your child come in prior to, or I guess after the September 1st date that now is in effect.
And so that policy is now on Thursday, David.
Yeah.
You'll have that on the Saturday to the dot date meeting. That's your comments about policy. I'll note that included in board book, some committee meetings, the findings, and the policy. And we sent a march of board that. Jay, is your hand up? Sorry.
Erin, I had a quick question. So the policy is set by the school or is it set by the town with respect to residency in the town? Who determines that policy or particular criteria?
So, so we do. And the changes that were made were just really around clarification of documents. What documents the school is going to accept and not accept for residency? Because I think, you know, as there's new things you can sign up for and there's new, you know, cell phones, other things. We just wanted it to be very clear so people had a place to look to understand what documents were going to be accepted and what weren't, so that there was no confusion.
Okay, Jeff? Great. Cave Liaison. Lady Delta. Cave on the Hill is coming up. I couldn't speak into your, oh, sorry.
Okay, Cave on the Hill is coming up in March, if anyone's interested in attending and hearing.
13.
Yeah, sorry. About some of the upcoming legislation that's happening. There are other classes, if anyone's interested, we can send them out to you as well.
And if you want to attend Cave on the Hill registration by March 8. Bob, your legislators, they're great a lot. For impact, our district, it was great. The other thing is the leadership team talks about whether or not the board wished to start collecting data for applying for the Cave Leadership Award for next year. We received the award this year. And so the question is, do we wish to start the process of collecting the data? One of the things we did last year was realize that we had been encouraged by many people to apply for the Cave Leadership Award, but we hadn't done the work as it came along. And so we had to clearly post appreciative March and then to bond it for for that entire year to collect it. So the leadership team felt that if we were going to do that again this year, that we should start the process now and collect it and go along so that there's not this huge massive amount of work that needs to be done in September and October to apply to that. So is there consensus on the board that we begin that process? It's not, it's just, I see some shaking heads, yes, that should get started. Okay, so we, we will do that. And so I will get the list and start working this March and bond it to collect what we need to, for our documentation to submit to the board. So thank you for that. Our upcoming meeting presentation for next month, March's board meeting, will include the presentation on technology upgrade. So I feel we're going to hear from Anthony. So if there's anything board members would like included specifically in that presentation, if you would reach out to Vonda, she'll make sure that their presentation that Vonda and Anthony work on will include that. I'll also announce that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. So Vonda, my word that it is going to. So look forward to that. Put it on your calendar. I don't think we have any. I'm going to announce that I would like board members to note that each of you received an email from Allison Delphama at Town Hall dated February 14 regarding FOIA educational training that will be held on Tuesday, March 5 at 6:00 p.m. in Town Hall Central Meeting Room. I would encourage all of you to attend with your schedule permits as sessions are always very helpful and informative. And even if you went last year, it's great to have a brush up or to hear anything new that they're talking about in terms of freehold information. As Lisa mentioned, everyone also receives an invitation to serve as a guest reader celebration of Read Across America. It's like one of my favorites. And as she said, Wednesday, March 6th at 9:00. So I'm asking board members if you are going to participate, please make sure that you either call or send an email to Laura Abbott and the board office. Okay, so through those two important things, the board members, there'll be public steps watching, my monthly community service announcement. Facility Committee will meet Thursday, March 7th at 7:30 a.m. Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, March 12th, 4:30 p.m. And our next regular meeting, Board of Educational, will be held on Monday, March 18th at 7:00. Next item on the agenda is public comments again. Erin, it's public comments. Anyone on line participating remotely who wishes to do a public comment? I think I see a hand. Kristen Jerko, is your hand raised? Yes, I see you. Kristen, I read the statement earlier about public comment. I don't know if you were on at that time, would you like me to repeat it? Okay, so Anthony's gonna unmute me, I think. Is that possible, Anthony? Okay.
Okay. Okay. I, I wanted to thank everyone for all their work on the Board of Ed, on the math presentation tonight. I know that I still have some questions left unanswered. I know that I still have some questions left unanswered, even after the extensive presentation. For example, Calvin has been getting compacted math now as a sixth grader, so I'm just kind of wondering, like, he's already ahead of a lot of the kids in his class in taking his pre-test and post-test and everything. So I'm just wondering what the plan is for the end of the year, like, is the end of the year going to be transitioning him into pre-algebra concepts? Or is it going to be just like giving him enrichment and what that's going to look like for him? And I know that, I guess, the compacting is starting in fifth grade, so I was just wondering if, if start, if that is going to be, like, what that's going to look like when those kids are sixth graders? So that's a question that I had, I, I would love, love, love if the administration would be able to have some sort of public forum, because I know that during these meetings, questions can't be answered, only the Board of Ed can ask questions. So it would be amazing if there's any way that the administration can have like a Q and A night about the math program at Teacher Road School. There are a lot of parents in the community who have asked for that, so I'm hoping that the administrators, I know you're busy, but maybe something like that would be better than needing individual things with like 20 parents about their child's progress in math. And like, my questions are the same as other people's questions as well, and I think it's something interesting to learn about. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, any other public comments? Danny? All right, next, executive session, the board will enter into executive session to conduct validation for the published information, I do not expect any action to be taken following the executive session other than adjournment. So I need a motion to enter into executive session inviting superintendent Tenda to join.
I move that we enter executive session to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent and invite the superintendent to join the board.
Robert Second? Sarah Beth? Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor? Adamant?